I don't need to be saying anything.
Yeah. Can you hear us now, Kelly?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear Mike now. He's the only one who is not on mute right now.
Okay, so do you want me to update you a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so we are joined today is Tuesday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty Supervisors Meeting. And we have Lisa, our County Auditor with us today. Luanne, our Executive Assistant in the background. We have Kelly from the newspaper and somebody from KMEQ, I take it it's Teresa. And we have Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. And first on our agenda was the Engineers Office, and we approved a residential entrance for Jim Von Maurer. That's spelled M A U R, Maurer, and Monma Section One, and we approved the.
Final voucher.
Final voucher for the Bernard Road PCC patching. And we approved the final voucher for the Iron Bridge Road, which we talked about was very good. From, from Highway sixty-two to the Macocota River. And now we are discussing a slide. To stabilize a slide that's going up Seavening Ridge Road, it's going up the hill northwest out of Bellevue, I would call it. And it's, it's, the guard rail is actually tipping and it's, so that's where we're at in discussion with Mike about that.
Thank you.
Traders have given us a call to go in and put some piling in behind the guardrail and then put some plank in front of that. And build the slope back up and get the guardrail back into place. Todd actually went up and looked at it last week. Pictures there.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Dan Schrader as well. So you got, there's two things we need to address here. One is the guardrail sagging. And the other one is the actual roadway issue. So after talking to Dan, so like Dan was, was gonna drive the pile right off the back of the guardrail post just to straighten up the post. And I think what I, when I talked to him, what I think what we need to do is move back away from the posts, down the slope ways, and drive the H pile and then plank up against that so you can put some material, the whole rock, back against there. Because eventually you're gonna, we're gonna need to do something with the height of the guardrail. Because if you, if you plant right in front of this guardrail and then backfill it with rock, the guardrail is only gonna be about two or three inches above the edge of the pavement. So eventually you need to come back and raise all this guardrail up along here so it would function better. Vehicles going down the slope, so.
So we're, we're, we're talking about going west with pilings, right? And then put the bridge plank and then building up level there so that will hold it? And then just pulling that guardrail back somehow, or?
No, you leave the guardrail in the same spot. So like, but this is the wall is the guardrail. And you go back down the slope, I'd say at minimum of three or four feet, then you drive your pile here.
Right.
So you're down the way, you drive a plow plank up, and then you fill dirt here up to the edge of the road. So you provide support for the shoulder, then you, then you can pull up the guardrail.
Okay.
The guardrail will stay in the same spot along.
And then can we just patch that pavement? You know, I, I was concerned more with the bus coming down there because it started to fall off. And how far is it gonna go if you leak it? So the dip in the blacktop itself, we can just patch that.
Yeah, so what you, the raising the guardrail is not gonna happen as part of this. Because eventually you, to raise the guardrail, you'd have, you'd have to do this. And I think you, I think that the long-term solution is to try and do this along the entire length of the guardrail, which it's a money thing. And there's also a spot just north of this that is starting to do the same thing. So while he's there, I probably have him do both of those. But yeah, so you drive the pile, put the plank up, backfill to hold the edge of the road, and then you can patch the road. But you're not gonna get the guardrail raised to the right height until you get the entire length taken care of with pile.
You know, that's been there a long time, you know, even before we resurfaced it, didn't have much of an issue with it, did we?
No, not too much.
I'm surprised. You know, maybe with all the moisture we had in the previous couple of years, but.
How thick was the overlay they put down? Was that, was that that incentive money?
No.
When was it done?
Five years ago, maybe.
Okay.
Five, six years ago. It was only, I think, three inches that we put on there.
The day they started the road use tax for the, the ten cent gas thing. Because they were in here asking about it. We were gonna turn it down in that morning. We heard about the, the money coming through, so we were able to approve it.
I know that has always been on the ten cents gas list of improvements that you did, so yeah.
But you don't, you don't necessarily have to raise a guardrail, but I would definitely fix this spot so you can backfill. You need material to hold the shoulders. So the shoulders are sagging. And then there's a spot just north of there, I'd have him do the same thing. He was, Dan was gonna go, he was kind of thinking about how to do it. He's thinking about moving a machine in there and then just kind of digging to see. Because whether you hit that rock or not, well, there's a rock outcropping, like big chunk of rock right up next to the back of the guardrail. If he hits rock, it's gonna be a little more expensive or, because he's gonna have to core drill and then set the pile in the hole that he drilled. But the nice thing is, you know, you got really good support. Yeah, so, and then if he does that, I would say if he hits rock, I would, I was talking to Dan about doing every other post. Because you don't have to worry about the soil holding the pile. It's, it's in a socket of rock. You, you should be fine. You should fill a plank between two of those and skip a post, you know what I mean? So he was, he was just kind of doing on a T and M kind of basis. But definitely need to get that fixed, backfill it, and then do that other spot.
And did we get a quote for that spot?
Yeah, his initial quote is, that's twenty thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
So the other one would be probably slightly less than that, maybe even.
Should be less. Like I said, if it's a type of material, you know, because if he's gonna, like, he says in his quote, if, if he's gonna drill, drill, core drill or pile it, it's gonna be different.
If he's, if he's already there, though, I mean, yeah, you can't really pound to a rock because you're gonna shift everything then.
Well, if, my point is, if he's got a machine there to drive and set pile, you might as well have him do both spots.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then the, another issue is the road's gonna have to close down when he's doing that, so it may be closed for several days.
Well.
That is a must.
And there's quite a few houses right on top of the hill, so that's.
And he said that, I asked him about his timing of it, he thought he could do that yet this fall. But that was his point to try and get in there and get something done with it.
Well, yeah, we'll just have to, I mean, we could talk to the school, of course, but what we just have to make do is, if we can get it repaired sooner than better, it's not gonna get any better.
I told him when he's, when he brings his equipment out, he's, don't, don't sit near the end of the road. Try and sit at least in the sideline or whatever.
We don't want your machine going down.
So they just put them on pads or something?
Yeah, I asked him, he'd probably bring in, they have, they have timber pads, he said, or, but they also have other things that you use, so tire or whatever too. But I said, yeah, we don't want to borrow up the new pavement app, so.
Okay, I would say, I guess, do we need to have action on that to proceed, or is that a maintenance?
This would be considered maintenance. I mean, you, you, yeah, it's not really a contract, so it's up to you guys. You can do it by motion, but you know technically, you're not awarding a contract or, you're authorizing.
Basically, it's no different than a riprap project or anything else we would do. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would say go ahead and proceed with. Let's fixing that anyway, repair or maintaining that road.
I think you have our blessings.
All three of our day labor bridges are open now.
Heard that.
And Jake Chuckles working on the slide over at Spring Brook Forest, and he's got quite a bit of that done already.
Good deal. Well, the weather cooperated until this morning.
Yeah.
Makes it.
All I have, I guess.
Make it a little slippery. All right, we appreciate that. Todd, anything else or anybody else got any questions for Mike or Todd?
I got, I've got some bad news.
I'll tell you.
They get to Clinton.
Well, it affects Clinton County, dude.
Oh.
Uh, so, uh, the Abbott County Engineers Association, in conjunction with the local systems office, they're talking about the federal bridge money that comes to the states. That's allocated based on condition rating of the bridges. Okay, so it'd be your deck, superstructure, substructure, or your channel adequacy. And the way the feds do it is, it's, it's gotta be like a four or less, basically. Then it meets the lower condition, they use that square footage to decide how much money comes from the feds to the state. Okay, so when it gets to the state in Iowa, they use, a third of it is the, the SURF DAC formula. It's the same formula they use to distribute the rugby stacks. And the, and two thirds of it is based on your structurally deficient and functionally obsolete bridges, the square footage of that, okay? So the, the feds are telling the state, you, you really need to distribute the money to the counties based on how we distribute it to the states, meaning the feds to the state. So they're, the County Engineers Association and local systems are talking about how to do this. So at first, they were just gonna do it all at once. Well, when they actually got numbers and they looked at it, there's, I mean, anytime you change something, there's gonna be winners and losers. So unfortunately, Jackson County is set to lose a pretty good chunk of money. So it'd be around a little more hundred thousand dollars a year of your federally money for bridges. I think Clinton Counties is around, I think it's like five thousand or something. It's, but, so the. So when I, I called the DOT when I saw this and I said, hey, wow, that's, that's a big, a big chunk. He's like, yeah, we were gonna do it all at once. We saw that. We don't wanna impact counties. And, and Jackson County is not the biggest one. There's other people losing more money than that. So there's discussion about phasing it in over like two or three years. So they would do like a percentage each year until it's, till it reaches its full changeover. So instead of being functionally obsolete, structurally deficient, as the factor, it gradually would come into this condition factor. So I, when I was talking to them, like, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, why this is happening. Because Jackson County obviously has a lot of need for bridge money.
I was gonna say, my God, we keep talking about the, the weight limits and the restrictions and all of that we have.
So exactly the point, Jack, that I figured, well, how can they have this many bridges that are posted? And yet they're gonna receive less money. And what it comes down to, what I, and this is what I've kind of confirmed with people I've talked to at the DOT as well, is that. So a bridge that's posted, say in Jackson County, could be because it's a trust or basically it's an older bridge that was designed for much smaller live loads, trucks, right? So when you rate that bridge currently with the current live load, the trucks we have to rate for now. Because the trucks we rate for now are different than when it was built back in nineteen thirty or forty, right? So the bridge conditionally, meaning it's not rusted out, it's not lost a section because it's deteriorated. It's just old and it's not designed to carry the, the current loads. It's not in bad condition. So that's why it's posted, because it's not designed for the current loads, but it's not in bad condition. So that's the big, that's the crux of the issue is now they're looking at, they wanna distribute the money based on condition. Bridges that are deteriorated, rusting, corrosion, you name it, rot. Instead of bridges that are really basically functionally obsolete because they're not designed for the current loads.
And that's because they keep changing how much they can carry on their, on their trucks and all of that.
Exactly. So they keep, obviously, just like anything else, the, the live loads of trucks that are, we must rate for by the DOT. Those trucks keep getting bigger and bigger. Now it's HL ninety-three is even, that's just a rotational load. But the trucks now are much bigger, obviously, than, than what they were designed for back in the forties and fifties and sixties. So that's the, I guess, the, the concept behind it, why it's happening is because it's not. Yeah, you have structurally deficient, obsolete bridges and they're posted, but they're not posted because the elements are rusted away. They're posted because they weren't designed for the current live loads.
So does our inspector have a say on the condition of that bridge?
I'll, I'll talk to you about that after the meeting, but yes, so. When we go out and inspect bridges, we, in all honesty, you don't wanna, when you're looking at the condition and you're between a four and a five condition rating, I would say you probably wanna err on the side of the four. I mean, we, obviously, you have to do what you feel is the right for rating bridge. But if you were kind of on the fence, I know where I'd be on the side of the fence.
Well, it makes sense. I mean, when you, when you explain this whole thing about the feds and do they understand? We have two hundred and fifty bridges in this county and the terrain and the, and the creeks and the rivers that we have, you know? I mean, it's just impossible to keep up with it.
Yeah, and, and I, I guess I understand where, where they're looking at too. They're, they wanna get the bridges that are basically deteriorating in a way. That's why. And those are ones that technically could fail because the condition, the condition is actually getting worse and worse. You know, Jackson County, their bridges are maintained. Yeah, they're old, but they're not deteriorating. They're just not meant for the current live load. So it's not like you got a bunch of bridges that are rusting away to nothing. That's where the feds are trying to focus, I think, are the bridges that are deteriorating because of condition.
So is there anything we can do?
Uh, no. So the, the big, what I've done is just said, hey, you know, if, if, if the feds are strongly recommending, is the term I, they were, I was told. If the feds are telling the DOT they need to do this, the DOT is saying, okay, we're gonna do this, the county needs to do this. Then let's try and phase it in over as long a period as possible. So that's.
Would that change our plan of attack on fixing these bridges? Should we use that money on some that are just underweight, or do we still go where they're?
Well, so right now, I don't think it'll affect your five-year program. Because of the amount of money you can borrow ahead and what, if they, especially if they phase it in, I definitely don't think it'll affect your five-year program. So, but you'll just need, as you plan, you may only be able to do, say, one bridge a year instead of two, that kind of thing. And maybe skip a year where you can do two, do one, skip the one, do two kind of thing. But it just depends on the size of the bridge you do. You do a smaller bridge, it's only three hundred thousand, you might be able to do two, you know what I mean? So I don't think it'll affect how you necessarily plan an attack. You should fix the bridges you need to fix. But when we do inspections, we really wanna start looking for condition. I mean, you really wanna, that's the substructure, that's the depth, that's the superstructure. So any one of those three elements, you know, if there's condition issues, we wanna make sure they're, they're coded appropriately.
So I hear that. So we have a tag meeting coming up pretty soon with Stu. Is Stu a guy we should be talking to, Anderson?
You could say something to Stu, but Stu's probably gonna. If you give an answer, that's probably not what you want to hear, I'm guessing.
Like you said, like you answered, Jack, can we do anything? You said, no.
You know, here's.
I mean, they don't come to us and ask us when they made this decision, obviously.
It's a, it's one of those, it's federal money coming to the states, from the states to the counties.
You got too many hands in the pot.
Well, it's, it's, well, it's technically, yeah, it's not really our pot, but it comes to us, you know, so, yeah. My, me personally, or why change it, right? If, is it broken? Have the, the counties are asking for this change. The counties are not asking for this change. This is the change that, from what I understand, the feds are telling the states, hey, you need, you need to distribute this money more like how we distribute it to you based on condition.
Always good news.
But, but they should take the input of the state and the counties in consideration when they decide to do this.
You're talking about the federal government.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
The water runs downhill.
So yeah, that's that. And let's see, what else? That was it. All right, I got, I'm gonna talk to Mike about, I got your pavement condition map. We got the data, I got the data from the Iowa pavement management program. We updated with your projects, so that with your, your twenty-year road schedule, I was gonna go over with Mike, and we got the bridge schedule. So you should have a long-term planning document for both, for your roads and your bridges, so.
Is that something that can be readily printed off, that road?
Yeah.
I'm not copying that, if I could.
Actually, yeah, you guys.
It's color-coded as to age and condition, is that correct? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, so PCI is pavement condition rating. It's just a number, zero to a hundred, hundred being good or excellent, zero being really bad. And then it's got the miles of each category. Now, this data is collected by a, the DOT through a program, so they go, the bay goes out, they use LiDAR. They, they measure the crack density, the rut depth, all that stuff. And, and IRI, the roughness, they measure all that stuff. And there's factors of each, and then they come up with a number, condition index, a number, and that sort of plot appears.
Yeah, that's what I like to see. And when was this done?
Two thousand and nineteen, the data was collected. But I've updated with, I had my, the kind of GIS guy updated with Mike's local knowledge of roads you guys just did, basically.
And do they do road counts, traffic counts on, take into consideration on some of this too, or?
On pavement conditioning, that's just purely pavement.
The condition of the road. Okay, interesting.
Interesting to see.
I know which two I'd pick, one and two.
Yeah, there's a, yes, I mean, you have a lot of in blue, which is real good, a lot in green, which is real good. Yellow is spare. Orange is, orange and red are things you wanna get done. Those are the roads.
Priorities.
Based on PCI that should be done. And so I, so this is your, your road twenty years and older kind of the priority one. So you can see the ones at the top, they're already programmed, the ones in yellow and orange. So you've got a pretty good chunk of them. You got a couple down here that would probably, I mean, you would probably wanna look at moving those higher up the list, but. And then this also does your, I put it in here to track your foreign market balance and the years of borrow ahead. So it kind of lays out where you're at. You could borrow ahead and you guys really, you gotta weigh two things. A year's a borrow ahead and your average age at reconstruction. So right now, this column of projects, the average age of the pavement, when you get to rehab it, is about forty-two point six years old. So for a paved road, for a concrete, for a concrete road, that's no big deal. Okay, for an asphalt road, that's gonna be really, really bad shit after forty-two years. So you, you kind of need to, I mean, it's just a tool to look at where you're at budget-wise. And when I, when I did this for Clinton County, when I went, kind of put me to the realization that we need to start spending more money on pavement preservation. Because I work with Mike too, we did this, put together this highway health check that I'll, I'll have Mike, he can talk to you about it. But, so basically, it looks at the, the projects you're doing for rehabilitation, the miles and the amount of money. And then it looks at what you're doing for pavement maintenance, the miles and the amount of money. It's kind of like a checking account. So like each year, say you got two hundred miles of road and you double that for lane miles for each, each road is two lanes. So you got four hundred lane mile years each year, your pavement age is one year. So you'd lose four hundred lane mile years a year. So what you do in reconstruction and maintenance adds back to the checking account. So like when you replace the road, okay, say you did ten miles of resurfacing. So that's twenty lane miles, and say you expect that to last thirty years. So you just added, you know, that many lane mile years back to your program. So it's a way just as a snapshot to check where you're at, are you investing enough in your system? And then if not, then you'll also need to check like, well, how far, if I can, how many years is my average age of rehab sliding down? The, the older it gets, the more complaints you'll get at the year you get reconstructed. So there's just tools to kind of check to see where you're at planning-wise.
Definitely important to plan ahead and, like you said, it gives you a check some balance, basically, to say, this, this makes sense and this is why. You know, you have the data and right in front of you. Yeah.
Valuable information.
Yeah, it just kind of helps you make it, make decisions. I mean, a lot of times decisions are made based on finances. I get, you know, so you can't, it's not like this is some miraculous thing that makes you get an extra million dollars a year or anything, but it kind of helps you plan to see where you're at.
Different than myself. If I'm, I wanna build the machine shed, I gotta plan for it for five, ten years. I'm not gonna do it tomorrow, you know? So it's like, if I know I have to go out and further, further or make more money.
Well, that will certainly be helpful when we're looking at the five-year road.
Certainly.
What we need to look at and what we need to do.
Well, and it's gonna go into, you know, all your consideration and, and the new guy and needs to be.
And we've been there with our bridges. It's like we had fifty and then we fixed five or six and, and we had fifty-two. And then it was like, we need to upper pace a little bit to, to break even, to stay ahead of the game.
Like, I can say at Clinton County, we have roughly around three hundred bridges, right? So if the bridges last sixty years, you gotta replace five a year, you're losing ground, right? I mean, it's, it's the bottom, the reality of it is. You know, when you start looking over your overall system, it's, it's kind of gives you an awakening kind of. You know, when you start looking over your overall system, it's, it kinda gives you a, an awakening, kind of, so.
Amen.
So, what's gonna happen in fifty years? Is all of our grain gonna be flying to the river, or is it?
All the loads will get really light.
Yeah, they will. Less tires on the ground, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, so, who knows what's gonna happen in sixty years, but, yeah. Based on what happened sixty years ago is today, I'm saying.
They better be strong, yeah.
And I, we just, Mike and I, and Stacy just went over the budget, expense, and revenue, so that's pretty much done, and she's gonna turn that in, should be good to go.
Okay, sure, appreciate it, guys.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Todd, thanks, Mike.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Two.
Okay, so do we have any, uh, visitors or any citizens that have any remarks or statements at this time that they'd like to input? Uh, I still have the same nine I had when I started. All right, we're down to, uh, Lisa, our county auditor. Good morning.
This morning, I need a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of a claims listing in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, uh, the auditor's office to issue warrants and publication of the claim listing in amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents, which is rather refreshing. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number seven hundred and seventy-six, dash eleven, dash. That shouldn't say twelve.
They both say twelve. You want a?
It should be twenty-four, so these are.
You just put half the number in.
Cause these resolutions definitely.
If you add the two together, you got.
Yeah, right, yeah, so it's resolution number seven seventy-six, dash eleven, dash twenty-four, dash twenty twenty. For an inter-fund operating transfer in the sum of eighty thousand, five hundred dollars, which is the sanitation annual budgeted transfer for fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, from the general basic oh one thousand fund to public health, the twenty-four thousand fund, effective November twenty fourth, twenty twenty, as recorded in resolution book four.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution number seven seven six, dash one one, dash two four, dash twenty twenty, as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Needed to approve and authorize board to sign resolution number seventy, seven seventy-seven, dash eleven, dash twenty-four, dash twenty twenty, for the annual nurses' inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, in the sum of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, from the general basic fund oh one thousand to the public health fund, fund twenty-four thousand, effective November twenty fourth, twenty twenty, as recorded in the resolution book four.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to approve resolution number seven seven seven, dash one one, dash two four, dash twenty twenty, as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried. Thank you, and have a good holiday. And Luanne? Moving right along here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar's gonna be pretty short this week. I'm actually starting tomorrow, on Wednesday, November twenty-fifth, the court offices and the state offices will be closed through the rest of the week, through the holiday, they have an extra day from the state. On Thursday and Friday, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, the courthouse completely will be closed, those two days. We will reopen again on Monday, November thirtieth, and at twelve thirty and the thirtieth, Larry has an ISX executive committee meeting, um, via Zoom, which I don't think on your original calendar, but it's on there now. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December first, at nine AM.
Okay, so can we just name the state and the court offices that are closed on Wednesday? So it would be the?
Clerk of court.
Clerk of courts. Probation?
In the court itself, I mean, if we, they were to have court, that also would.
So basically, them two offices, but the rest of the courthouse will be fully functional on Wednesday.
Correct.
So we clarify that, yes. So the court has, courthouse is not closed on Wednesday, you're not, courthouse is not closed on Wednesday. They didn't give that date, I guess, I told Becky, yes, I guess they must have deserved it. She never, she never answered, does that, what does that mean?
Something about if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything.
Okay.
Twenty twenty, nothing's the same as usual, so.
Okay, that's.
That's it for me.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Luanne. Have a good holiday. Oh, we're into work sessions, is there anybody coming today?
Yep, yes, some commission is coming at ten thirty, so other than that, um.
Is Ben or anybody coming? Did he get Stockton filed before he left?
I didn't sign anything.
Can we just go down and get it and do it? And what's it take? Does the board ask to approve?
Well, we already approved it.
Well, Laurie Scoville comes at nine forty-five, right?
And she is on. Laurie is on this morning.
Okay, so this, um.
And then Tom Devine at ten fifteen.
Is there any other unfinished business? I mean, basically, we could adjourn and just go into our work sessions, is that, or do you want to? Any other unfinished business or reports from anyone?
We had early childhood in Iowa yesterday, and, um, just business as usual, um, working on our community plan. And they were, they were kinda disappointed, they had forty people sign up for the virtual, um, baby shower, but they only had sixteen show up, and they had fourteen door prizes.
So they made out good.
So then they added a couple other.
So everybody got.
But they had, she had fifty bags prepared, because when they had forty that were coming, um, last time, they had quite a few more than they had anticipated, so she made bags, and they had diapers and in materials from the various providers of services, like eye smiles and children first, and all of that, and so she had that, plus some baby clothes, and, you know, things about wick and all that stuff, so, she said, I had a lot left, but, um, she said, those that, that came virtually, she said, it went well.
Good. And we had our de-cap meeting on last Friday also, and of course, um, looking forward, um, the funds are also coming in a little less than what, of course, was expected, but, uh, the programs themselves are really working good, I mean, they're, they're looking at adolescents and, and, and child, early childhood and the reading programs, how, how, how they're working, you know, the percentage-wise, and keeping, keeping, keeping these adolescents out of the facilities and with their families, you know, is really working well, and, uh, the screening process that they started last year, especially in the Bellevue School, I think, let's say, identified X amount, you know, um, I guess issue moving forward is how do you follow up with it, so, the funding to follow up with it.
I did notice, send me the big paper this morning, that, um, uh, Dolly Parton Library and the, the reading program, both got some funds from the local area foundation, there was quite a list of funds that were granted.
Wonderful.
Yeah. And we gave the Dolly Parton five, well, two thousand five hundred for Jackson County, two thousand five hundred for.
See, the new facility in Davenport opened up some adolescent beds.
Yes.
Ten, and then another two.
Eagle View?
Yeah.
Yep, they did, that was some, I got a news up on, on email about that, so that's good. So now maybe we won't have to ship them across the state.
That's a nice facility.
Oh, it's wonderful, did they give you a tour?
Yeah, it was out for the grand opening.
Oh, that's right, that's right. It's, it really is, nice facility. I'd move you adjourned.
Good second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn any further discussion, so is our, well, what we have left here, just so the media knows, we have a couple work sessions with, uh, for budget work sessions, and they are not zoomed, correct? No, they're open to the public, yeah. Okay, so, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried, thank you, and everyone have a great weekend.
Happy Thanksgiving.